We will call a meeting in order. I'd like to thank County Council 2021 for Pasquatt County Board of Commissioners. If you would, Eric, if you would.
Yes, that's great to hear. Mr. Ford, once again we come to you Thanksgiving in our hearts. Thank you for so many blessings even through a tough year. I've been very blessed and we pray to you to touch those families and pregnant pees that have struggled through this pandemic. Bless those always that are working for our freedoms here in rural. Again, make sure that everything we do is always for your glory and the betterment of this community. I just am afraid.
Jonathan, the young meats ladies, they come as some Christmas girls and help us with the lights and things. Thank you for coming.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with equal rights and justice for all.
Thank y'all for doing this. All righty, at this time, we have the finance, the management agenda.
We have two items we add to the agenda. Item seven C, approval of audit contract. The Finance Committee has recommended approval of the F Y twenty nineteen twenty audit as presented by Thompson, Rice, Scott, Adams, and Company. And seven D, sound neck road renovation. The Finance Committee recommends approval for complete renovations necessary to convert the former sound neck fire station to an EMS facility adding not to exceed amount of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay? We're good. Hold on a second, Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I had two more amendments on item five A, D screws. The executive director will actually be the lead on that presentation. And then I would like to add item five B, which would be emergency management and Alamo Regional Health Services COVID-19 update and recommendation.
Okay. All right, so you've heard the amendments to the agenda for five A and five B as well as the additions of seven C and seven D under the consent agenda. Are there any other amendments?
I don't know, my kind of got to grab one from the back. I've got it with the D and E on seven.
You're right about that, Sean, because MS goes to the C, so it's B and E. Any other corrections? Okay, so we have amendments to the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the addition of five B, sevens D and E.
Okay, very good. Sean's like a motion, second for Charles, any further discussion? All those in favor, see if I can say it out. Those like so. All righty. At this time, we will call the Alamo Pregnancy Resource Center. We'll call D screws if she would. And she has hands. We do have a small gift to give her.
I thought you had a gift for us.
Come back in Christmas time and tell her later to sing a Christmas song.
Thank you all so much for allowing us to present tonight. I'm not going to get up in the microphone because those of you who know me very well know that I have a very loud voice anyways. Thank you for this opportunity. The Pregnancy Resource Center in Clement has been a part of Pasquatt County since nineteen eighty-eight. We provide free and confidential services to women and families who are facing unplanned pregnancy situations. Our services are free and confidential, and we have been providing services to men and women, actually. Our youngest client, I've been there for twenty-four years, by the way, youngest client that we've served since I've been there was twelve years old. The oldest was fifty-two. We work with men and women, those who are either pregnant or parenting children from infancy to the age four. Our program is unique in that not only do we get involved when someone is carrying a child, but we also stay a part of that child's life or their parent's life until the child enters kindergarten. We are a threefold ministry. We are funded privately. We don't receive any tax dollars. Most of our funding comes from churches, individuals and businesses in the community. We do receive a few small grants, one from Alamo River Electric Co-op, one from the Catholic Diocese, and we do receive ten thousand dollars a year through maternal child help funding. That is filtered through the state of North Carolina and the Carolina Pregnancy Fellowship here in our state. Our county served are basically the first judicial district, but we do serve beyond that area if needed. But I would say probably, Amber, tell me if I'm right, probably ninety-two percent of our client base comes from Pasquatt. All right? Our clients are from every racial background. They are from every social economic background. They are rich, they are poor, they are married, they are single, they are prostitutes, they are victims of sexual abuse, they are pastors' daughters, they are college graduates, they are working, and they are on the system, all different types of people that we work with. Our center is basically set up in three aspects. We have a clinic. We became medical in two thousand and thirteen. We provide, under the leadership of Paul Shuline, many of you may know him, he's a local OBGYN. We provide free pregnancy tests, free STD testing, we do limited obstetric ultrasounds, and we do prenatal vitamins in our clinic. We also do options counseling. So we provide truthful information about the options available to women who find themselves pregnant, okay? We do not recommend or refer for abortion. We do provide information about abortion procedures and the risk and complications. A woman who finds herself pregnant and chooses life for her child, we support along the way in our resource center through our parenting program. Our parenting program is unique in that we provide services not just to moms, but also to fathers. In fact, we have the only fatherhood program in this area right now. It's called Dr. Dad. Before the pandemic, we were able to provide it in-house. We did it at night, dads mentoring dads. We actually called it our estrogen-free zone. Men came in after hours, the women weren't allowed. We provided dinner. I mean, we used an evidence-based curriculum through the Fatherhood Initiative. Dads were participating, everything was growing great, and COVID happened. So right now, our dads are participating in our Earn Body Learn Program, which is an online curriculum. Each week, a link is sent out to moms and dads. They do this class online. Once the class is completed, they come to us for curbside pickup and they get material assistance for their children. We do diapers, all types of toiletries, clothing, car seats, anything a mom or dad needs to take care of their children. All of this, again, is provided for free, okay? We partner with our local health department and DSS. We have a memorandum of understanding right now with DSS. We do testing, we refer to them for treatment. We do pregnancy testing, we refer to them for prenatal services. We also provide their ultrasounds. As far as DSS and the court systems, they refer to us for parent education. We are excited about those opportunities to partner and serve alongside other agencies in this community and consider it a blessing. I'm going to now hand this over to Amber, she's going to help fill in the blanks. I've tried to talk ninety miles a minute because she'd give us ten minutes and I could talk for hours about what we do, and we want to give you an opportunity to ask questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't talk as loud, sorry. So another aspect of what we do is community outreach. We are really involved in the college campuses. We have a partnership with Elizabeth City State University. We partner with these schools, high school and middle schools when they allow us to, youth groups, church groups, community groups, anywhere that we are able to lead partner. And we are very grateful for that. And our newest, biggest venture that we wanted to share with you guys is our medical units. And this is a huge, huge advancement for this area. As we all know, we live in an area where transportation can be very difficult for a lot of our population. It's hard for them to get to a doctor's appointment or to the grocery store, much less anywhere else. And so we are in the process of getting a mobile unit that would allow us the opportunity to reach the rural areas, parts of our community that otherwise are not being reached. And so this is a brochure of that. I'm going to let you guys hold on to it, pass it around at your leisure. But just quickly so you can see, it would be a fully serviced vehicle like this that would allow us to do all of the services that we currently do in office on the road, which would be a huge asset to this community. We have already raised one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars towards this, and we are fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars away from our goal to be able to get this in this community. And that is huge. And so we would love for you guys to take a look at this and see what is hopefully coming by the end of this year. That is our goal, to raise the rest of this money that we need for this project by the end of the year. So we would love for you to take a look at it. Thank you so much for allowing us again to come, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
I would just like to say, what a great organization. I mean, I've been to many of your banquets. I'm kind of disappointed we're not having this year, I guess due to COVID, very. I would love to see more of the county commissioners go into some of these banquets that we're going to have. I think the next one's going to be next year, is that correct?
Next spring.
So, I mean, I love this organization. I think it's really great what they do for Pasquatt County and beyond.
Thank you.
What's your tax filing status? Are you guys?
We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3), and we're a Christian organization. We're ecumenical.
Thank you. Sounds like a wonderful program. This is really, honestly, first I've really heard anything about it or dealt with it, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric.
I was, I had a great opportunity for popcorn night last Friday night, and I was able to see the new movie Roe v. Wade with your board chair. This is me, my best friend's wife, so I got insights there. And it really, I thought I knew the entire history of that. That movie really changed the whole aspect of what, I mean, I knew most of it, but not the way it all kind of rolled out. Very, very interesting, and I hate too that we can't share the banquet this year, but the golf tournament is outside, we're still going to do that.
Golf tournament in the fall.
Okay, let's keep that going so I can embarrass myself once again. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I like to thank you for all you do. My question would be, how do you advertise? I mean, because, first of all, I'm just sharing this for the very first time, and I've been in this community for very long. And I know that the importance of what you're talking about, what about the schools, any involvement at all with the high schools? We have two high schools here that probably could use some information from time to time. How do you advertise to let them know that you have programs available to, you know?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to answer that. That's a great question. Actually, at the beginning of the year, each year, we send out packets to all of our school nurses and counselors. We send a letter thanking them for what they do and explaining to them our services, and we send them pamphlets with all of our information. In the past, we've gone out and done a personal visit, so the individuals in the school that would handle those type of situations are aware of our information. Also, in the past, we spent ten years in Pasquatt County Middle Schools, actually teaching in the health and PE classes. It was about eight years ago that that changed for us, and the PE teachers started doing, we did part of the healthy living curriculum and did the abstinence-based education. We also send information out to our health departments and Department of Social Services, anywhere that we can get information out, we do. I'm sad that you didn't know about us, and we also are, we do all the speaking that we could do at every community event we can get to.
Right, I'm sure of that. It's just that, I think, many times in our, you've got a lot of information flow, but a lot of times, a lot of people might not actually know exactly, you know, what's available to them. And I just want to thank you and say good luck.
Thank you, sir, and I would love the opportunity to speak in your church on a Sunday.
Right now, we would love to help you in our church. And also, I think a great place would be the radio station at Elizabeth City State University. I don't know whether you would have made it, but I'm sure that they would love to have you there because I know a lot of people listen to that announcement and so forth from that particular radio station on campus at the university.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Charles.
It seems that you are in a great job force community, and we really appreciate that. I was interested in kind of job telling and what you were talking about, the relationship that you have with the school district and what you were doing today, so that was very interesting. And certainly, I would take you up on the hope of going to God's church once we get back in.
I would love to. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Just let Mr. Mead know, he knows how to get in touch with me.
Very good. We want to thank you for coming here and introducing your program to this community and the support that you do get from agencies. We wish you success.
Thank you, and thank y'all for what y'all do. God bless you.
Thank you. All right, this time, we read out the amendment five B. We'll hear from Battle, who we go first. Brian, whichever one y'all believe. Come together and screw the vote.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update tonight on the most recent numbers from the COVID pandemic. As of last Friday, there are thirty-three active cases in Pasquatt County and four in Camden as of right now. We have eclipsed the fifty percent percentile as far as the number of residents in our district that have received at least the first dose. So that's an important milestone there, so that gives some level of protection. And we're also, right at forty-two percent of our residents that have been fully vaccinated. And so those fully vaccinated would be those that have had the second dose or have received the Johnson-Johnson vaccine before it was called. They would be considered fully vaccinated. As it relates to my perspective in the public health realm, as far as our current state of emergency for Pasquatt County and Camden Counties, I have some concerns because we're approaching the, or we're right at the storm season with tornadoes and hurricanes and the like. And I just feel like, like everything, state of emergency's got a shelf life. And, you know, we're seeing numbers come up a little bit, things have been flowing, but it's certainly nothing to be overly alarmed with. As we continue to get more of our population vaccinated, people are exercising extreme caution now with washing their hands, waiting six feet apart, social distancing when possible. These numbers, you know, it's, we've all seen this in the media, and we've lived it every day. We're a little past two weeks beyond Easter, so those gatherings are going to happen. Mother's Day's going to happen, Father's Day's going to happen, July Fourth's going to happen, but we just have to make sure that we're cognizant and trying to do the best we can to stay protected. You know, with public health, we're responsible for assisting with the shelters during storms. And so, again, with staffing and resources, that is a concern, and then we also assist with storm debris removal and the like with our solid waste department there as well. So, and internally, I believe I shared this at our last time we worked together, internally we have stood down our instant command structure within Alamo Regional Health Services, and we're trying to get our normal clinics and normal operations and services back to some sense of regularity there. So, anyway, for now, I think I'll turn it over to Brian, like him, it isn't me.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us be here to discuss this state of emergency status. Just to give you a background on this, pandemic's been going on since March of twenty twenty. There's no doubt, we all know that. North Carolina State of Emergency Management and the governor declared state of emergency on March the tenth, whereas Pasquatt County, so we work with that, established their own state of emergency, what we call a local state of emergency on March seventeenth. With the state's emergency declaration, the governor did implement executive orders such as mask covering requirements. Initially, there were some things in there about unemployment insurance and people being out of work and daycareers, things of that nature. But there was also the social distancing, the wait, wash, wear type thing, and the six-foot social distancing, restrictions on mass gatherings, occupancy restrictions and business operation restrictions. Those things continue to be in there, but the key, the leniency is starting to see its face, rare its face in those each time he, the governor implements a new amendments to the state of emergency. Currently, in Pasquatt County, state of emergency, there were no restrictions, there were no prohibitions in place outlined in our state of emergency. However, it did state in there, we would implement and enforce what state laws and federal laws that were come down by the governor and we're continuing, and the president, and we're continuing to do that today just by the executive orders that the governor had presented. Our state of emergency has aided us in the last year of being able to take, receive supplies that were in demand, especially so that we could take care of providing masks for courts, county commissioner meetings, and EMS and the long-term care facilities. It also assisted with bringing in personnel to assist with food banks that we have ongoing operations on, and also assisting Battle's group with the clinics that were ongoing. Since March of twenty twenty, there have been ten other events that required a state of emergency statewide activation. Of those, there was only one that brushed the coast here that affected Pasquatt County, but there was not a local state of emergency that affected us here. However, there are neighboring jurisdictions that have various degrees that they had to implement a state of emergency within a state of emergency. Kind of gets a little convoluted at times, but they were able to manage those because they were small events, but they had to take care of what they needed to. So, a state of emergency in general is an enactment by our local jurisdiction when an imminent threat is faces. This could be a natural, man-made, or in this case with COVID, a public health event. Typical state of emergency is enacted and in place for anywhere from forty-eight to ninety-six hours. Then we transition ever into that recovery phase. As y'all are well aware, we're three hundred and ninety-nine days into this, so we're well over that ninety-six hour period, and we have transitioned into a recovery phase. As Battle was talking about how the numbers are coming down and staying down with minor spikes here and there, but nothing significant to where it marks a full-blown response like we had. Also, local jurisdictions can impose restrictions as far as local state of emergency to assist with the safety of citizens. This can include curfews, alcohol sales, business operations, and where individuals can travel to. It is also necessary for state or FEMA assistance if we require resources through the state or from FEMA, that could be personnel, resources, or reimbursement. We have been informed by North Carolina Department of Public Safety Legal that because COVID is such, and it has been ongoing for so long, federal government and FEMA has made a ruling that local jurisdictions can continue requesting state assistance, federal assistance, resources, personnel, or reimbursement, even though we do not have a local state of emergency in place at the time we request it. We have had one, so we set the precedent, however, we don't need to continue such in order to continue to receive those services. There are currently approximately thirty of the thirty who comes in the eastern branch that are still having an active state of emergency, but discussions over the last few days have, I have found out that those are just waiting on to these mask clinics get up. Once these mask clinics get over in the next month, month and a half in the various jurisdictions, they do have intent of lifting their state of emergency. We are ongoing supporting the mask clinics since January the sixth, and we will continue to do so as long as, as they call them, need our help for any supplies or personnel. We do have clinics going on at Alamo Regional, and also Elizabeth City State University, started April the fifth with mask vaccinations on campus there. They had to do a little pause last week because of the drug that they were providing. Now they have switched over to, I think it's to Moderna, so now they're cranking things back up and getting back in gear with that. We also have a mobile vaccine that is state-sponsored that's going to be arriving in the area very, very soon to start reaching out to migrant workers, the farm workers, and the non-English-speaking populations to make sure that they get their vaccination. I don't know what vaccine they're going to receive, I just know they're coming to the area. That was the plan a week ago. Not sure where they're at at this current time. So just to wrap things up, we're still able to receive resources, we're still able to seek reimbursement, and we will continue to have to abide by any executive orders that the governor sets forth, and we will continue to participate with the mask clinic vaccinations as deemed necessary by Alamo Regional system.
Is there anything else to add to this?
Yes, sir. We are winding up our second dose mask clinics this week, so this should be our last mass effort with the Modernas for the second doses. We would like to, at some point, if, when the Johnson-Johnson product gets remitted again, we'd like to have a couple of large events just to try to target large numbers of people, but that wouldn't require any type of large-scale mobilization. We've already got our assistance pretty much in place.
Yeah, I'd like to start out with this on statistics. If you compare California and Florida, the death rate are equal pretty much per capita. But if you look at the lockdown on California, you look at the lockdown for Florida, Florida was locked down for thirty days. California is still locked down. I guess some friends in Los Angeles, they're very, very limited what they can do. If you look at the, California has the sixth youngest population, but Florida has the sixth oldest population. Ninety-four percent of the COVID deaths have been fifty-five and older. So what we're being told that, I guess, most of the deaths should be in Florida because they don't have lockdown, and they also got the sixth oldest population. Well, North Carolina is ranked twenty-second in the nation for the death rate. Guess where Florida's ranked? With a thirty-day bucket, twenty-seven. Why is our death rate higher than California, I mean, higher than Florida, excuse me? Why is our death rate higher than Florida? What these guys are saying, these are professional guys, are saying that we need to lift this, and I recommend we do that. I wish we could go further than this, but with, I've talked to several attorneys, and I guess it's not able to happen. But I, we need to let our business owners in this county know that we're trying to do all we can to support their businesses. When you're sitting in a restaurant and you have booths, and there's no way to pass it on a, they're shutting down every other booth, and you've got people waiting in the lobby rubbing them against each other, I mean, that, it just makes no sense. So I think it's time to move on. I think it's time to go by these professional opinions. And, you know, we're kind of limited what we can do, but I just think we need to do something.
I just want to say to Mr. Cornell, Mr. Betts, thank you very much for your service, especially during this time. I know it's, it was very intense, especially those first few weeks and months, just, you know, every day, I mean, physically, emotionally draining to come in and hear the reports and try to understand exactly what's going on, much less formulate a plan to react to that. And I think, I think you guys are to be commended for the efforts in this area for sure. I'm very pleased to Um, I'm, I'm very pleased to hear your optimism, Mr. Betts, about the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. Some additional data is coming out. I understand they caused that for, you know, an abundance of caution and, and in, in looking at some of the, um, side effects may be, um, less frequent than other very common, um, medicines or prescriptions, um, specifically, uh, I hear compared to, to women's birth control options. So, um, I, I am, I am kind of pleased to hear that that might be coming back. I'm, I'm optimistic with you as well. Um, I do share the opinion that, uh, we do need to, to listen to our medical experts. Um, there are some side effects, unintended consequences, as Mr. Betts pointed out during our last, uh, joint session, uh, whether it's, uh, our inability to, to gear up, staff up, surge up for any upcoming emergencies, um, or, or whether it's just trying to get, um, some confidence back in the general public to, to start attending to, uh, their own medical needs, uh, the preventative care that they've been missing out for the last 13 months or so. Um, so in addition to that, I, I have my own concerns about the organization, um, the, the allowance, uh, under the state of emergency to centralize power. In some cases, that power and control goes to, um, representatives that may not be accountable to the public or, or elected officials. Um, and, and so I have a concern about that, and I also agree that, um, lifting the state of emergency is the right thing to do at this time.
Thank you, Eric.
I'm happy to what these guys did. Thanks for spearheading the effort. So, I mean, you guys on the front line every day, going with it. In my entire career, we worked under, um, these types of situations because it was based on reimbursement. And this is not affected by reimbursement, so it's a common sense effort to come out of it and hopefully get, get things prepared for the next thing that happens to come, hopefully, that'll come. At least for Reddick, it does. So, yeah, just thanks for your efforts. It goes a long way with our community, basically, just.
Charles?
I just want to say thank you very much for what you've done. I think, I don't, I don't necessarily object to the lifting the emergency. I just think that, uh, we need to kind of educate the public to understand that, uh, although Pasquotank County may or may not elect the emergency, that doesn't relate to what the state, uh, state, state of emergency is for the state of North Carolina. And I think the public needs to be careful on that. But thank you very much.
Mr. Perry, um, I, I, I heard, pretty much, I think, for what you said. I did not hear about the, um, rest homes and jails. How they, um, street to the rest homes and jails, you know?
Right now, those, uh, we, we don't have any outbreaks that are certainly like we had before. We do have a couple of cases here and there, but please remember that an outbreak is defined as two or more cases, and so it can look artificially inflated. But right now, as we can see, knock on wood, the rest homes, uh, everything looks to be just like the rest of the community in a, in a, in a stable and, uh, declining pattern. And I would add too, that the, uh, your, your, your peer members, your peer counties that are ARHS are having these similar discussions as far as, uh, move forward and what, what that would, what that would look like. And certainly, nothing that we do at a local level, we do anything to circumvent or supersede anything that's happening from an executive order standpoint. We are still working with our restaurant partners, with our environmental health specialists, with, uh, the mask mandates and those types of things. But we're trying to, uh, here locally, we're trying to work with folks as much as we possibly can so that they can maximize their, uh, occupancy and try to get back to, again, a sense of remorse.
Any more questions, Mr. Perry?
I'll stop right there. I have a lot of questions, but I'll stop.
So, Val, you mentioned that we, we'd have 50% of the first shot for Pasquotank County. It should be close to about 20,000 shots, is that correct?
Yes.
Just trying to go follow up with what people, because I was challenged on that, David. But our conversation has been very successful in, you know, giving this to the community. Had about 16,000 in the second shot. Is that right?
We are looking at, right now, uh, with our current, with, with ARHS numbers, I know of just shot of 11,000 Pasquotank residents that have gotten the first dose and 9,000 that have gotten the second dose. But the caveat there is that is only ARHS. That's not Walgreens. That's not all the other people that are going to all the other counties. I mean, we, 200, 3,000 people from Virginia came down here and got, got shots. So, uh, those are the folks that I know that we put shots in arms in Pasquotank County. So the numbers are, are definitely much, much higher.
So the 50% really is of those that are eligible for the shot, is what you're saying?
Exactly. 18 and above. They're absolutely right. And to your point, that's very important too to remember, because when you look at our 65 and up and our 75 and up, I mean, you, you're, you're talking well north of 3/4. Uh, 75, 80%, those folks have been vaccinated and are protected in those large, highest risk groups.
See, the, uh, statistic that I would have was 55%, I mean, 94% of the deaths were 55 and up nationally, correct? So if we're saying we got 75% of the 65 and above, we're above.
But now aren't they now finding out that the younger, that all the younger people have a problem with them?
Yes, sir, and a large part of that is just the spreading, quite frankly. Uh, you know, you get, get a bunch of, uh, uh, school-aged kids together, and they're not as compliant as, as, as some adults. But it really, it really goes back to that vaccination process. And to your point about educating the community and educating the public, you know, uh, the, the greatest step that anybody can take is to go ahead and be, and, and be vaccinated. And I, and I say it often, you know, I, both of my children have received their second shot, and I would never do anything that I thought would harm my, my, my children. And, uh, you know, I've gotten mine, and I think we just need leadership. We need folks to say, you know, it's, I've gotten my shot, and it's safe, I feel confident, I feel comfortable. Um, the Johnson &amp; Johnson pause, you know, it's, it was six females out of 6 million people, uh, and all six of those had low blood plate counts. And so, I mean, they've really been able to zero in and, and hone in on that, and they were smart to pause. But that's what our systems, that's, that's, that should give people greater comfort, because they did pause for six cases out of 6 million people. Uh, so again, I'd say it was safe.
The fact of the property and this, all of the things that I'm talking about. Would property have anything to do with, you know, the number of people that receive the vaccine?
Vaccine is becoming more and more and more readily available. We, we have more supply than we have demand, uh, uh, right now. And so we're, we're trying to go into the housing authority. We've been in the housing authorities. Uh, we've got our remote van, similar to the folks that were just talking about, their mobile unit. Uh, we, we, we go out to churches, we, we go everywhere, but it's still a matter of personal choice. And so I think that's really, that's really the crux of it. They, the, the confidence, uh, that people will have in the, in the system or both, the belief in a vaccination, uh, and just protecting others. I think that's a good point, Mr. Perry, because if you're vaccinated, you're protected. And so the folks that don't want to be vaccinated, unfortunately, are those that are, unfortunately, the most vulnerable now, because they are walking around unvaccinated.
I've talked with a lot of young people that will not, you know, they say, I have not had a vaccine, and how do they know if it's, it's, it's the fault that they made, and how often they expect it to happen. What is it in their mind that causes them to not want to take it?
Uh, that would just be pure speculation on my part, but we were all 10 feet tall and bulletproof at one time when we were younger. Uh, you know, I just, I, I think it's just education and knowledge and comfort level. Uh, Moderna is coming up with a product, um, that's going to combine the flu shot and, uh, the coronavirus vaccine. And so again, as, as folks get more confidence and comfort with getting their annual flu shot, and that product is already going to be, uh, mixed to combat the coronavirus. Hopefully, we can put some of those fears in.
Thank you, Paul.
Val, we have a couple more questions.
Yes, sir.
For Brian, one of you. So when did we really start entering into recovery mode? When in January, when shots became available? Or when we started understanding the spread and how the protective work would put in place to reduce the amount of spread and transverse infection?
Personally, and Brian, because he did the weekend three, oh, yeah, but what, what?
He's having a, um, I'm thinking about February. Once we got a few weeks in, uh, shots in arms and that's more, but I can recall back, looking at, uh, stuff from the state, when the executive orders started to change was about first of February, mid-February timeframe, where things started to loosen up a little bit. And, and we're not there, but we're, it is continuing to loosen up. And our next one will be April 30th, and we'll see what, uh, what will happen then. But that's what I would, my aspect would be the recovery phase, Ryan.
And I, and I think the most frustrating time was, uh, last year when we didn't have a tool to use. But, you know, I think that third, fourth week in December when we got a vaccine, uh, there's your tool. You know, it's a matter of getting the resources, and we, we garnered everything we could with the guard and everything else. And I think as soon as we had readily available product, I think that was truly, I, I would even say into, you know, maybe December and January, once we got, uh, product on the streets and in arms, it gave people an option to get vaccinated and take that step to recovery. Because that's, you know, you've got to get that first shot before you can get that second. So I, I, that's just, and again, that's just one, one man's opinion.
So as the state of emergency was declared, was based on the COVID or the pandemic, somewhere like a hurricane, which we know within, we said, a week, 10 days, you know where you are and where you want. But this is just a lot longer to kind of get a resource to be able to move us into a recovery phase. If that's what we're hearing?
That, that is correct. Once the vaccine was introduced into the society and we were able to start getting those mass vaccination clinics out there and getting the numbers of the people getting the shot, that, that's when we really knew we were headed into recovery phase aspect, because our, our resource requests, so to speak, uh, went, went out. Uh, I mean, we were able to handle stuff locally, uh, supply chain started picking back up, and there's still some delays within some of the aspects of supply. But about Jan, December, January timeframe, the supply chain started getting better, and that helped. That's part of the recovery phase. Once, once an EMS agency can go back to their normal supplier and start getting resupplied, that helps. And then the vaccine, introduction of the vaccine, all of that tied in together. Uh, they're considered, I, I guess y'all would be considered our degree management. And, and from a hurricane, I, I mean, really, that's the way to compare it. That's what we're all used to, is the hurricanes. But Alamo Regional Health System was our degree management and picking up the pieces and starting to get people back and on.
And, and Val, you mentioned a minute ago that if we start seeing increasing spikes in areas or age group or something like that, then we could reinstitute or put the state of emergency back in based on medical data and findings? Is that what we understand?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Uh, we could have, we could have a spike in the summer like we had last year. We could have a new variant come in in October or November. But I think that's all the more reason to make sure you've got that tool that you can use in your toolbox to make sure we have, we can have heightened awareness in the community. Uh, because, you know, again, at the end of the day, public health has been doing communicable disease for, you know, hundreds and hundreds of years. It's not any different than hepatitis or HIV or anything else that we all deal with on a, on a normal basis that are walking up and down our sidewalks and our, our streets every single day. Uh, so, you know, uh, we have isolation and quarantine authority in public health. So again, we, we have other tools that we can utilize just in our day-to-day business, and we, and we use them without the state of emergency, you know, with our everyday practice.
So right now, we're under the governor's executive order 204, which is still requiring with face masks and face governments, the social distancing of six feet, restrictions of mass gatherings, indoor 50 people, outdoor 100 people, capacity limitations on certain businesses, sanitation standards, other public health restrictions, and NC health and human services guides remain in effect. That is something we have no control over, is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct. Whatever.
That's why, you know, we asked you to question, is there's things that you have, say, and things that we feel like?
Yes. We're, we're still falling under that state, state of emergency from North Carolina to include any amendments to the executive orders that are set forth. If, if, if they change the social distancing to three feet, we can abide by that. If they change it to 10 feet, then we have to abide by the 10 feet. And that's because all the, that, the, the state level has put in those restrictions and prohibitions. We just have to enforce them. Uh, our local state of emergency has to abide by what the state is unless we decide to supersede, which in our case, we have not superseded anything that, that the state has put out, we've abided.
Unlike what Derrick County did, where they blocked the county out.
Correct. Correct. That's the, that, that would be a good example, that they, they went above what the state did and they, they shut ministers off from the out-of-rooms.
All right. Any further questions, John? Then we'll wrap this up.
I think you're welcome.
Perry? Perry?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the adopt the press release as presented.
Okay, I think, okay, we have a motion in a second. There's a draft that's been presented to the board for the removal of the, coming out of the state of emergency. Um, so all those in favor who have a motion second, all those in favor, send the votes in I. Those who close their eyes.
Mr. Chairman, just to, just to be definitive, we're adopting the press release, but if we could also have a specific motion to lift the state, local state of emergency Tuesday, April 20th at 8:00 a.m.
Do you accept that as the, friend?
No, I did my motion to include lifting the emergency as of Tuesday, April 20th at 8:00 a.m.
Okay, John, you're second. The rest of the board will go ahead and vote on that again. All those in favor, send the votes in I. Those who close their eyes. All right, thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you for the support and the care of our community, the company, about it all.
Thank you all.
Next item on the, on the agenda is to consider agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, which will be 7A to 7E, which please, the two amendments, which is the applicable, was it audit contract, is it audit contract? Oh, no, I got that wrong. Audit contract from the preschool and Soundneck Road Innovation, or Soundneck, you know, Road Building Innovation, which is 7E.
Would you consent with the added items?
Okay, motion in a second. All those in favor, send the votes in I. Those who close their eyes. Very good. All right, under new business, we have Shelley's, uh, petition to, for addition of roads in precinct forms, base two, and state two, the state system for maintenance. Shelley, I'm going to lift it, just a normal protocol for us.
Just normal protocol, as always, you know, we really strongly encourage developers to have these roads taken over to prevent problems in the future. So we're excited each time we see a petition like this, and we definitely recommend that this move forward to the DOT and Raleigh.
Very good. All right, so we'll need a motion to accept the petition.
Motion to accept the petition.
John makes the motion. Charles, second to, any further discussion? Given not all of us in favor, send the votes in I. Those who close their eyes. All right, Mike, this is you, Senate Field, 4 feet from five.
Uh, pretty straightforward. A, a couple of years ago, the General Assembly passed a law, and then we went all over.
I, that kind of slipped by me, that, that all four of those went in one vote. And I had some information I wanted to provide to the council about the voting machines.
Did it get handed up, could it be submitted, or?
Well, I did submit some information to, uh, got a couple of the commissioners that I happened to run into in a restaurant, but since then, I have additional information that would definitely affect your decision to.
Mike, I don't know. I mean, you had public comments, and that's, you allowed that for discretion, wasn't even allowed for you to speak, but you had public comments.
This would be very recent information.
I forwarded to Sparty on the first one you sent us, um, and he was able to work through that one to determine if we were still okay. Is this new information?
It is.
That, um, maybe you could give us in a paper format?
Okay, give me five minutes, we're going to get to the rest of this, this agenda. We'll have to amend our agenda to hear you on the side, okay?
Back to the, okay, uh, new business P. Um, the, the General Assembly passed a law, all of the governments in the state had to send any ordinance to the General Assembly that involved a criminal. any ordinance to the General Assembly that involved a criminal penalty. So they've been studying this for some time now. I learned about this bill from the Association's weekly report, maybe two weeks ago or so. And there's a hearing tomorrow, an judiciary committee, we got word about that today. I got in touch with Senator Steinberg's office prior to seeking the approval and said that's one issue. I've got an issue with this. His staff told me he shared my concerns. So this is not something that is abused or used recklessly. It is used for lease law violations, for noise violations occasionally. It's just, as I've said before, it's a tool we don't want to lose. So anyways, there's a resolution that has been prepared, just I'm asking the board to support that. It's not something we want to have taken away from us.
Okay, very good. So you've heard our attorney's request to oppose the Senate Bill 455 based on civil penalties. I mean, discussion with Mike on this? If none, we have a motion. Charles seconded. Sean, any further discussion? Given not all those in favor, signal the box and not. Those opposed, like, sign. All right, consideration of both, the Senate Bill 349, Council 401. Sparty, is this you, or is this coming from?
I'm going to let Shelley speak to this.
Shelley, you want to come forward on this and take this a little bit longer. While you're coming up, I have spoken to the other members of our council government, the National Commission. Some of them are aware of this and some of them are not. But those that are aware of it have already opposed, sent resolutions in support of the president, as well as the, and some of the cities have not seen this yet, some of the cities have not. So I think it's, we have to do our due diligence, make the city see this so they can get that on their general. Because it does have a true impact on your job.
Absolutely.
Especially the role of the law.
Yes. So this Senate Bill 349 has a lot of different things in it. It's pretty comprehensive. But the biggest thing that is concerning is the fact that it is basically redefining single-family housing to include up to a quad, which is for family dwelling in single-family neighborhoods. So you're basically looking at, you know, a single-family neighborhood that's approved. It's designed for a certain amount of traffic. The lots are designed for a certain amount of impervious lot coverage. You've got parking issues, you've got roads that have not been designed for that kind of traffic, for those kind of parking issues that you see with multifamily. So we are, that's probably the biggest concern is how do we address that? Obviously, in Passaic County, we don't have centralized sewer. So with cities, it's a little bit easier to accommodate because you don't have septic systems to worry about. In counties, with septic systems, you're always going to have that person that's kind of pushing the limit, pushing the health department to approve something that may not, should be approved. We're already at minimum lots size of 4,000 square feet for a single-family dwelling. And this basically would say, well, you have to allow up to four dwellings on that lot, instead of just one. So we are definitely concerned about that provision of legislation. The legislation also requires that we allow accessory dwelling units or an accessory dwelling unit on each parcel of land in the county that's owned for a single-family. That doesn't break me as much heartache or headache. However, that provision does say you can't take into parking into consideration for an accessory dwelling unit. So you're going to have more people potentially parking on the street, particularly with cul-de-sacs. And Barry can tell you, with cul-de-sacs, they're designed for the minimum radius. And a fire truck or a school bus or an ambulance may have trouble navigating that cul-de-sac if you've got multiple cars parked there. So, you know, you haven't designed the community to accommodate for this. This is leaving you really open, particularly with those subdivisions that are already out there. And this, we're also concerned about some of the language that's used in the legislation. Because when you write a law or an ordinance, you want to use specific language that's very easily definable. And some of the language that's used in this proposed law is vague. And it really leaves it up to interpretation. For example, they use the words substantial compliance. And the development permit application that substantially complies with the basic information required by ordinance shall be sufficient to accept and process a request for local state, lower state health permit. Well, who defines what's substantially compliant? I received a site plan application in today for new development, a commercial development up in Newland. And all they had was a site plan. They did not give me a swizzler plan, they gave me just 400 calculations. The site plan is very deficient, in my opinion. It is substantially deficient with our application requirements. But I bet the engineer that applied for this would probably say differently, he would argue differently. So the vague terminology, it really concerns me. It makes it very difficult to enforce a state statute or an ordinance that isn't very clearly defined. Also, another provision in this ordinance, so this kind of continues, we saw this several years ago with the Board of Adjustment language. But it kind of extends the language where basically if a resident sues the county for denial of a permit and the county loses, the county has to pay their attorney's fees. But it doesn't say the opposite will be true. So if the county gets sued, and we spend $100,000 on attorney's fees, and they lose, then we still have to pay attorney's fees. It seems to me it's quite unfair if you're going to have it one way to not have it both ways. I don't see that as much of a problem here, but like, for example, when I worked in Currituck County, we saw lawsuits all the time. There was a lot of, there were a lot of developers that had a lot of money to sue. And there were some very frivolous lawsuits that took a lot of time and a lot of energy. And so, you know, for counties like Currituck, you're going to see a lot more headaches with this kind of language in there.
All right, any questions, Shelley?
I've got a question. Is this similar to the same legislature stuff that they're trying to do at the federal level? Because I've noticed there's a bill at the federal level that seems to be similar.
I have no idea, I really have not kept up as much with the federal. Every time, the Motoc Family Housing?
Yeah, it's similar to this bit. Very similar. And I agree on that.
Okay, Sean, questions?
I don't have any questions.
Barry? Okay, we need a motion to adopt the resolution.
I make my motion in a second.
Motion in a second from Jonathan, second from Sean. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal the box and not. All right, opposed, like, sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shelley.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Back to the, off the floor, conversation just a minute ago, your name?
Angelique Boylan.
Angelique what?
Boylan, B-O-Y-L-A-N.
So for us to reconsider tonight, what would we do? Or would we take action? Or we would take action the next week as the attorney had?
Can we just allow her to sign in, public comment? Give her four minutes and then we'll revisit that.
Would we not have to reconsider that number, item number three, that we voted?
I would basically just say, listen.
No, no problem.
We are ready.
All right, very good. So if you would please sign up on.
She'll be right there, the clipboard will be back.
Letty Lynn has one in front of her, if you don't sign. If you would sign up there, please, then we will, any objections from the board?
There's not a pin back here to sign with? Here, sorry, okay.
Mr. Chairman? I would also like, after she speaks, I would like.
I was going, I'll, 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 the Board of Elections.
That one, sure.
I've already had that.
I apologize if this is, seems very urgent, very last minute. I did attempt to get in touch with Emma, I did work for the elections, I was at the simulation.
Do you believe you have an address?
Angelique Boylan.
There you go. I think, sorry about that.
I was the city resident. I worked in the River Road precinct. I, at one point, spent 10 years programming, database usage, some of the similar things that you're doing when you're doing voter registration databases, voter tallying, although that's not the information or data that I was tallying. I was doing the same sort of thing with other data for 1810 in the southeast region. And because I'm now retired, I have a 91-year-old dad that I take care of with Alzheimer's. I am at home all the time. I'm extremely interested in data, mathematics, and at this point, elections and machines. Since this was the first election I had worked. I'm familiar with the machines you currently have. And I have spent since about the middle of November listening to evidence in actual evidentiary hearings, discovery, reading lawsuits, watching at least seven states senate and congressional hearings. Witnesses such as cyber warfare, people from the military, from the CIA, subcontractors of the government, very credible witnesses. Up until last week, there were no forensics that had actually opened machines. And it was assumed by most of the public that the machines that were a problem had been produced or sold recently in the last six years by Dominion. And that is no longer the case. Michigan has actually opened machines. And unfortunately, the machines that had modems, unknowing to those who purchased those machines, modems that were connected by IP addresses that are now in evidentiary, discovery hearings, being connected to IP addresses in places such as some China corporations, such as ones that we're familiar with for producing electronics to us. And those machines, most recently where the modems were found, were produced by ESNS and they had modems in them. These modems were not external so that they could be viewed by the average election worker. They were actually soldered to the computer mainframe, inside the computer, to the brain of the computer, essentially. If you've ever seen what a brain looks like and you see all the soldering, that modem is right there where the operating system and everything else that controls that computer is. And depending on your knowledge of computers or software or modems, you may think that it wouldn't really matter if it's in there if you didn't connect it. And that's actually false, it does matter. Because even my house, if I have a modem anywhere in my house, someone can drive up out front with the proper knowledge and equipment and they can attach to my modem in my house. And they can view whatever they choose, which is the same thing that has happened in multiple areas. It's expanded from the five states, we're now in the dozen states, where lawsuits are being brought in at this time. And forensic audits are actually being conducted. So my major concern is not only that we spend $100,000 on machines that, yes, they're in 77 counties now. I don't know what counties those are, that's what.
We're about 400 in this industry right now. Can we do one more bit?
Okay, that are in those counties, but that we may have to replace. And that's a lot of money. And then also not have another machine, which we're talking about today, trading in machines which are only going to give us about $7,000, which is less than a tenth of what we're doing to purchase new machines, which would be a backup to the county if this continues. And I have really 90% confidence that it will continue, that eventually it will filter down to the SMS machines here. It is already filtered down to diebolt and heart machines are now being opened and examined. And I just don't believe the county would want to make that type of.
That's true. All right, I want to thank you for your comments and your concerns. Hello, would you like to respond?
I mean, I can just present you the information that I have.
Thank you.
So I want to say that, Ms. Boylan, I did get your email. I was out of town whenever I received it, but I did get it. And I've been talking a lot with the State Board of Elections. I've gotten in contact with ESNS. I just want to make sure that I had all the information concerning the evidentiary hearings that are going on currently in Michigan concerning the modems that were found on the motherboards in the DS 200s. So Ms. Boylan's not wrong. They did find modems when they did their forensic exploration of the machines. But it's important to note, this is just a fact, that in Michigan, it is legal to transmit unofficial election results directly from the machine to their state reporting software. So they do have connected capabilities on those machines to do that. It is something called a telechip. And the reason that these are found, once again, is because it is legal in Michigan. According to General Statute 163-165.7, this is not the same for North Carolina. So no voting system used in any election in the state shall be connected to a network and any future allowing connection to a network shall be disabled or removed. Prohibited network connections including internet, intranet, fax, telephone lines, networks established via modem and any other wired or wireless connection. In the official certification guideline for voting equipment in the state of North Carolina, all machines have to be, all hardware, firmware, software have to be made available to the State Board of Elections for inspection. And failure to do so would be failure to become certified in the state. And then once again, it is illegal for any county board of elections or any county board of commissioners to commission the purchase of equipment that is not certified by the State Board of Elections. The ESNS equipment is certified at the federal level, it's also certified at the state level. We currently have ESNS equipment in this county, it's just that in 100 versus the DS 200. And according to an email sent by Karen Brinzenbell, who is the executive director to the State Board, the modems referenced in the articles concerning Michigan, the telechip are not present in the ESNS DS 200 in North Carolina, they have confirmed this. And it is important also to note that the component that they found on the modems in Michigan is not a software product or hardware product of ESNS. It is a third-party chip that is put on there when the machines are ordered based off what the people ordering it want for those machines, which we are not allowed to even include in ours because it's against the law of the state of North Carolina. So that's the information that I have.
James, Jonathan, any questions?
Have we ever had a backup, a backup system for these tabulators and out of box?
No, I mean, so, kind of. Kind of get into the wire a little bit with election administration. But we have never had two different types of election tabulation equipment at one time. So we haven't had like a heart system and an ESNS system at the same time. But there are different ways in which ballots can be accepted into the tabulator. If, if something goes wrong, mechanics fail, stuff stops working, it's just part of electronics. If something goes wrong with the machine or anybody in the precinct thinks that something's wrong with the machine, there's something called an emergency bin, which is a secure bin within the tabulator where ballots are put in. And depending on whether the machine is fixable or a new machine is brought in, then a bipartisan team would take those ballots out and scan them. The people whose ballots they are, are able to come back and watch that happen if they want to. That option is always made available to them. But we've never had two separate systems. That option is always made available to them, but we've never had two separate systems.
What, in the, in the kind of mock, I don't know what you call it, the mock election?
Yeah, the test, the simulated election.
The simulated, I asked that question, was there any way that these machines can be broke into that way, I don't know what the proper term is, but hacked?
Hacked, yeah.
Plugged into ethernet cable or whatever? And he assured me that that was not possible with these systems.
Yeah, in North Carolina.
In North Carolina, right. So I guess you're the one that recommended this to, for us to trade the old system?
Well, so, this was just a, I don't even know what to call it, a formality. It was included in our contract that had been passed along, that we would get sixteen thousand dollars in credit for the machines that we have, which would decrease the cost from a hundred and sixteen thousand to the hundred thousand that we currently have. Machine for machine, so we would give them eighteen one hundreds and we would get eighteen DS two hundreds. And that was just a formality, because we didn't talk about it in the previous discussions, just to show you all where it came from.
And you are the one that recommended this?
The board did, my board did.
Okay, and this was their recommendation to do?
Yes.
And they recommended this, this type of system?
Mm-hmm, yeah, through a formal process back in August of last year.
Just a question on the timing of when the trade-in and transfer would occur.
It would be within this fiscal year.
Between now and?
June.
June.
Just because we have the money this year to do that.
And I'm guessing Ms. Boylan's information is correct, you know, things are continuing to progress and there may be a chance, I think that's what you were trying to convey to us, there may be a chance that these particular machines that we're trying to trade in might be subject of some sort of...
Well, the ones that you're trading in might actually be useful to you at some point in the future because...
So your concern is not that the ones that we're trading in contain any sort of malware or anything?
That, that's always a possibility, okay? That's not my main concern this late in the game. My main concern is, should this filter down to North Carolina and the states? That there are some that still have the one hundreds like we have, but these particular two hundreds that are being used in some of the other counties may end up being a problem as well. The only, that wasn't the only issue. The original one that I mentioned to you as well was that the simulation that was actually done was on ballot copies, not inked ballots. So it really wasn't a test of what the machine would do in an actual election situation as well. And one of the problems that has been with many machines is the fact that machines that were supposed to be calibrated...
I should have been engaged right there, I apologize. It was just a simple question.
Your concern is, is there a modem that external people can interrupt? Sorry, not the paper, but how they can interrupt?
Well...
That's the concern. Image is correct. They actually just stated this, North Carolina State Law, these machines have been tested that. Very important question.
I appreciate the investigation. I mean, I appreciate it being brought to us as well. I mean, that's important, it was brought to us, but due diligence was in your court, and I appreciate the clarification, I'm comfortable with.
It's important to be transparent, and if there's an issue, it needs to be brought to us.
Glad you did that. So everybody, when you get your new machines, crack open a couple of them, make sure everybody's in there.
Or not, so we're not warned.
This will be off the table for discussion on our next election. Fair enough?
Oh, sure.
We just look at it, I mean, we can't have the same machine in Michigan that North Carolina says you can't have a modem at, so.
Yeah, and decertification isn't a final thing. If something happens, then the machines can be decertified and leave.
We lose our votes.
We lose our machines, yeah.
Back to the agenda at hand. Thank you for your...
Make sure you work, make sure you do.
Thank you.
County managers, go to your business, please.
Notice report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Attorney? All righty, internal election reports, anybody got anything to add?
I had you let me very...
Yeah, yeah, I got them.
I was answering for this, your first one, isn't it? Okay, Sean?
Look, I just, I wanna bring it up in front of the group. I mean, we, we had some customer, customers, so we had some community concern about the traffic specifically on the northernmost intersections along seventeen and seventeen business. And trying to get DOT to respond to those concerns regarding people just frankly not stopping or, or, you know, considering the traffic stoplights there. I witnessed another near miss the other day coming through that, that new land up through intersection just prior to me getting, getting to that intersection. I just wanna keep bringing that up in front of the board to make sure it stays in front of us. Other people in the community, especially the northern part, are concerned there in whatever our traffic polling efforts are through those, through those intersections. So I just wanted to bring that up until we get a response from DOT. I know the county managers, they're trying to reach out, but to no real avail if I understand his updates correctly.
He's bringing it up this week, it's hard for him to be up there to me.
Just what he said at that light, because I personally avoided an accident because I was looking out, and I stopped because the guy wasn't paying attention. He ran through the red light. My light is green, but fortunately I stopped, and that's the only way I avoid that.
Very good. Barry?
Mr. Chairman, before you mention that, could you also mention our request to have, once again, study decreasing the speed limit at Mount Carmel Church? I cannot get a response to that.
Just send an email to both of those, we'll send it over to Angela Bell. I've got to go to coordinator, keep it on the agenda there, okay? Eric?
I like Sean, wanted just to bring up, I mean, I've talked about it a couple different times, but in the five-year plan COA, it's gonna be a huge advantage to us to go ahead and figure out what we're gonna do with EMS unit on that side of town. Be really nice to kill two birds with one stone. I don't know if Dr. Mike will, his team, just very grown-up board. If everybody can entertain having a unit as part of the facility, it'd be a great advantage for our people that work out of that unit, as well as the nursing students that participate in it. It'd be nice if we could be a partner in that and have somewhere to leave that ambulance when we move over to Walmar.
We also got a set of bays over there now that we can renovate too.
So just a good, a good way to move it, to go leave that unit there and have that area still covered, forward-thinking. That's all.
It's more forward-thinking in the northern part of county too.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, I'm on the meetings, I wanted to get the larva. I don't have anything in particular to announce other than the fact that I I actually witnessed the thing that I asked about, the gentleman with the melanoma situation this past week. I had people that had some melanoma health issues and did not know exactly what to do. And they actually carried the child to the hospital here, and they had complications there. They transported the child to Chesapeake General. I guess they had complications there before they found out about the crisis situation with melanoma health in North Carolina. So they moved the child back to a hospital in North Carolina. I mean, yeah, a hospital, I don't know what's over there. But I still think that there is a need for some signs or something being placed throughout our community in some kind of way so people would know that when they have health issues exactly what they need to do.
There was one on the core Harrington Road that, also the board board right there, as you pull in on Harrington Road, like I know that, there was one of those crisis signs there. I'm not seeing it, well, it was there, I'm not sure if it's still there. There was one there, I think there was another one. I've seen several others, right?
But I do know that it's, there are people here, a lot of people that actually read, listen to radio and so forth, they, they really have problems when they have health issues. And I think they really don't want to go, that's all.
Charles?
I had several meetings, the jail board meeting, and the library board meeting. I got an email and I just took my time to look at a Zoom they had on broadband. It was not for North Carolina, it was really, I think, for the United States wide. But I think that, what it brought to my mind, I wonder what kind of organized effort do we have on broadband in North Carolina? Because that's one of the things that came up in this Zoom, how they had organized, people that organized, and looking at the need and the specific areas that they needed better broadband. I hope we're doing the same thing in North Carolina.
Our region is very active, I won't respond to that.
Okay, and my other thing was, of course, we're still working on the drainage in Pasquotank County, and I think we're really looking at an educational effort there also because people just like I am are looking for their water, their drainage problem to be fixed. And one of the things that we're finding out is that it's not necessarily going to be fixed. We might be able to make it better, but it's probably not going to just be fixed, certainly not in the entire Pasquotank County. It's not going to be fixed because it's just, just not possible. So we need to start an educational effort because we've also, I've had an experience to go out with Wayne Henson to a meeting where a resident was concerned about the work that was done. And the work was done, but the situation is still not fixed. And Wayne had spent a lot of time trying to explain to him why it was done, how it was done. So we also will need an educational effort with this drains. Very interesting, but the public needs to understand what's going on.
Very good. All right, a couple things. One is, Sparty is putting together the budget now, so we should start seeing a budget calendar and how he's gonna move forward with that to get us to the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. I guess that will start first of May at some time. So we'll start having a couple longer days, a couple longer meetings. Our opposition has been meeting, we've moved forward with our budget for next year. This Wednesday, we have RPO meeting, which I continue to remind you of your concerns as well as some other concerns in the region. With workforce development, we're starting to see some unemployment numbers go down just because of that, however, housing has become still a big issue, especially those that have to work at the beach or the resort type of communities. A lot of the activities with the teenagers and the students would go work in their restaurants, and there's not opportunities for them to have a place to stay. So I heard that this morning, and I've heard it in Derek County a couple times, about what they're trying to do or how they're encouraging, you know, businesses to help with those housing. The people from here, I mean, how many people do you meet every day? Forty-five hundred come here to Norfolk, and imagine in summertime we can see another large group going towards the beach, you know, contractors, the people that work at Burger King, the house. This week, the EDC will be starting the interview process for a director on Friday. So hopefully by next month, we will have an announcement for the community on who our new EDC director is gonna be. One thing is, we talked about Barry, he's talking about the northern part of the county, you know, with EMS, you know, we have to look at both sides of the county. There, we're starting to see a little bit of growth on the south end and the north end for our EMS services. And even in Camden or Camden County, we're starting to see that need. I know there's concerns about the fire truck in, you know, inner county, but it's still, that's a valuable service to that community over there in Hall Street on that side of the county. So I think that we all have your discussions. Maybe Jerry will start talking about a broader, outside the sphere of Pasquotank County just a little bit and some of their needs. We already provide service in Camden. You're getting ready to get twenty-four hundred houses up there in Camden? That's gonna be a big change up there. That's better than twenty-five percent of what I'm...
The problem exists in all the thunder counties, long and thin. Several companies are fighting with it every day, causing call volume at both ends. Can you get there? The weak spot area is gonna be covered by this addition of station six, station four. South Mills is on that end, it's close to New Land.
Right.
But that's why I was thinking, once we move near Walmar, we gotta have something on that corridor. And that, it may not be where COA is, kind of just brings going. It may need to be a little further more closer to Providence Bay, but anyway, just need to make sure we're covering, you know, because it's only gonna get more calls. It's the only thing you can call to get a bill later. So instead of driving to the hospital, they can call.
Also, Curritag just put a new station too, didn't they, over there? And they offered a considerable, that new subdivision here just approved.
Across the state, everybody's having to put units of fire stations.
And then with that comes, comes personnel issues. So now we're like across train.
The reason the fire stations are, I mean, you're still getting a lot of feedback too. Anyway, that's another story for another day. Fire stations are located within every six miles, no more than twelve hours in between. It's our perfect location for response times. EMS doesn't have to try to, like, they have to follow. So it's just, it is what it is, but just something to have, worth to plan out.
I called Jerry the other day and asked him about the next step. You know, he was like, yeah, we've got to prepare for it, just like what you said, just...
Just need to all the ticket back, about fifty-eight years old.
That's true. We're working on it.
Carve out a small, just carve out a small piece, man.
Anything else that needs to come before this board this evening? If time will stay in adjournance to our meeting.
The budget meetings, that are already on schedule, and for three blocks, they're gonna be potential here. Hook probably now, hook I believe.
It's all, it's all for, okay, yeah, and that's the...